Okay, it's on. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, Barbara.
All right.
Barbara, you are, yeah, you're muted.
There we go. Thank you very much. Thanks. So I put a chance to look at it ahead of time. So we're looking at Northeast Delta Dental Fisher Cat Stadium for graduation. We have, as Paul had said, we have gone to visit there. They are aware of all the Department of Education end of year guidelines. They've actually been in communication with the Department of Education. So they are aware of our social distancing. We have, you know, wearing masks, doing all of that. And they can, they absolutely accommodate a group our size there. The date right now, we're looking at sometime in July, pending whether or not the Fisher Cats are going to actually have a season. So I'm working with my contact there, Stephanie Fornier. She's the special events coordinator there. So we are also looking at an early evening around 5:00 to 7:30 ish on a Wednesday or Thursday evening, because lighting is unavailable. So, so security, so the next piece under security and COVID-19 considerations, actually, I heard from Stephanie today, and she contacted the Manchester Police Department, and they do not need to be present at this event because it's a closed event. Okay, which is cool. That would really actually is going to save us about $500. There will be bag checks. Each student will be allowed three or four guests, depending on what the guidelines are later on down the line. Right now, the guidelines, I believe, say two guests. So we're working with that. Family members will, tickets through the Fisher Cat Stadium, they will do all of the ticketing costs, so that each family will have a separate section. Family members in attendance are expected to wear masks while in the stadium and during the ceremony. And there's going to actually be two separate entrances for families. They're really accommodating us to keep us six feet apart. And there will be a separate entrance for the students. So ticket reservations will be, we'll need to do a cutoff about a week before the event. Like I said, we're in process of figuring out when exactly that event is going to be. Students will receive their caps and gowns, and awards, and medals, and anything that they need to wear. A couple of days ahead of time, we'll arrange for dispersment at Pembroke Academy. Let's see, there are at least three parking areas that are for free around Fisher Cat Stadium, which would hold about 60 spaces. And there's also a large parking garage owned by Southern New Hampshire University, that they're looking into us being able to use for the ceremony. Let's see, logistics. So, let's see. So we also thought that what we would like to do is send out a letter to let families obviously know that this is what, where graduation is going to be and how we're going to do it. And it will be a full plan of what graduation is going to look like, but also what the expectation is, sort of the rules and expectation of the behavior of the students as well as the family members, so that we can have a safe, festive, and fun graduation, still with maintaining social distancing. The cost, which I thought was very reasonable on the rental of Delta Northeast Dental, Delta Dental is $3,000. And that includes the use of the infield, the warning track for the ceremony, the lower seating bowl, will have access to the lower concourse and all of the restrooms. Fisher Cat staffing will be on hand to do ticket taking, bag checks, just making sure that people are doing the right thing. And we'll also be able to, renting the big video board in their PA rental system. So we will also, that's all for $3,000. We will also hire a company called MFI, so that we can livestream the graduation. And that will be streamed on our website, and it'll also be streamed on our Facebook page. The next item was the Manchester PD, so we don't need to do that, so we can take that. And then we need to rent some chairs from Christian Party Rental, where we all already have some receipts on hold there, because we use those a lot. So that's the nuts and bolts of the proposal. I'm sure there's plenty of questions. So please, any comments or questions? I'd be more than glad to answer any.
Looks like Amy unmuted herself first.
Sure, thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt you one second? I just got a message that Sandy lost audio. So if we could, let's maybe pause for a second, because she needs to take the minutes. Patty, could you maybe shoot her a text and see if you can figure out what's going on?
Are we obligated to stop this meeting per the order if she cannot access it?
Yes. So that's why I'd like to give her some time. I mean, I would assume she's a member of the public, and I, and we would have to do that. So I want to give her a few minutes to see if she can.
I think with a couple of minutes for troubleshooting, she'll get back in. I don't think we're gonna.
I think it's, if we're going to deny her access, if she can't get in and someone wants to cover for her, and she's okay with that, we can probably make that happen. But thank you if you'd give her a couple of minutes. I'm texting her.
Just a quick question. I sit on quite a few boards. Some of our recording people take it off the video. So is it easier for her if we do, I know you did record this, right Patty?
I started recording it, yeah, a few minutes ago.
You want to ask her, Patty, if she's okay with us continuing and if she can do them off of the video? Suppose if that's okay with her, it's okay with me.
Andy, I was only asking because I didn't know how far back we lost her.
She put something in the chat at 8:11. So yeah, I'm not sure how much before that it was, but.
Plus Barbara did a really excellent job of like sticking to the script, and Sandy has that handout. The one change would be no Manchester PD?
It was after Patty had started the recording that Sandy lost audio.
I'm not hearing back from her.
She joined. I saw it pop up that she rejoined. So I wonder if we should talk and see if she can hear us.
Sandy, do we have you?
She's on my participant list, Patty.
Yeah, I can see that.
I can also see her. Her video is working.
We can see her texting Patty.
Yeah, she just said she, she just said she's not sure what's going on. I think it's okay to proceed if, if you want someone else to take the notes, and she can look at the video as well. I mean, there's no requirement that Sandy has to be the one that takes the notes.
Right. Also share that it was, it was explained at the new board chair webinar that I attended last night, and I've got the RSA around here somewhere that the minutes don't have to be quite as thorough as Sandy usually makes them anyway. So if anybody wants to volunteer to take minutes tonight, it pretty much just has to be what the topic of conversation is, any high points and any action taken. That's especially true now that we do have the video. So if a member of the public were to look at the minutes and want more information, they can refer to the video. I'm not good at taking notes at the same time I'm talking. Is there any of you that have that particular talent and would want to volunteer for a little while?
Andy, this is April. I just want to state that I'm actually uncomfortable proceeding, knowing that Sandy cannot, by the way, my son just, my little four-year-old just entered my space. I'm uncomfortable proceeding based on the emergency order number 12 from the governor. This dates, it provides a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access, and adjourns the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting.
Yay!
Terrific.
All right. Thank God. Do you love Sandy? Okay, so, sorry about that. Thanks everybody for hanging out. I just messed up my own video here. So I think Barbara, we still got you. And Amy, you were going to ask a question.
Yes, I was just first going to say, thank you, thank you, thank you. I think this is such a terrific plan. And I, I've, you know, planned conferences, never graduation, but I know the logistics that go into it. So both my things are financial. I just wanted you to confirm what I think is the case, that this is at no cost to the graduates and their family, that in other words, tickets will be free. Okay. And then I don't need to know the answer to this. I don't think we need to discuss it. But if the total cost for this event is significantly more than what was budgeted for the event, then I think that there are business leaders in the community that would be more than happy to get their name at the Fisher Cat Stadium to sponsor this event. And I would encourage you guys to look into that. But I saw you saying no, that it's not significantly over budget.
I can tell you it's not over budget. It's actually, the money that we would be using to rent the Fisher Cat Stadium is less than the money it costs to rent all of the tents, the chairs, the staging, and everything when we have a graduation at PA. So I just want to tell you, I have been doing graduate now for 14 years. I know how to, and I committed to my students, my seniors, that I will do the very best I can to make their senior year, end of senior year special, because they have had so many losses. So I think that this is a really special thing. Very excited about it.
Anne wrote in the chat that she's got a question.
Barbara, I just want to say thank you very much. Going through my children's high school graduations, college graduations, it's one of the most important parts of their, of their growing up as, into an amazing adult. The question I do feel a little bit uncomfortable is saving money on the Manchester PD. Even when there's a large amount of people, I would feel more comfortable if we had at least. PD, do we have PD attend when it's at PA?
We have PD for parking at PA. But, you know, it's the Fisher Cat Stadium, actually Stephanie Fornier, my contact person, reached out to them because I wanted to know how many police officers we needed. And she emailed me back today, and she said that they do not feel like they need, the police department feels like they do not need to be there.
Does the Fisher Cat Stadium have security?
They have their own security.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. The second question I have is, currently in the state that we're in, we can't use public restrooms. So is that something that we have to worry about that may relax by the line?
I'm sure. I'm sure it will. And what they'll do is they'll set up a person outside the restroom to allow like one person in at a time.
Perfect. And then do we?
There will be hand sanitizer. There'll be all that, all of those things will be.
And my other, last concern here is the six feet apart. Does that pertain constant throughout the whole ceremony? The kids have to be six feet apart? They can't go and hug each other or take pictures as a group?
They cannot. That's one of the things that's in the, one of the recommendations that's in the Department of Education end of year, is that they want to make sure that we don't provide any way space for together. So Fisher Cat Stadium feels like, with their security, and with their staff, and with us also helping them, our staff and our teachers, that we can remain between six feet apart. So they'll set up, they'll set up the field, so that our students are sitting six feet apart each way. So our rows will be set up that way. Our rows, our students will be set up between first base and second base, and between second base and third base on the sand, not on the field. And then behind home plate is where the podium will be. So students will actually walk that way, six feet apart with an adult, and who will make sure they maintain six feet apart. Like, so all of these directions are going to go out to students and parents. I will be doing many of these meetings with families, just to make sure that people understand, you know, that we have to follow the rules here.
Thank you very much. I just have this question. And I know Loudon, excuse me, Merrimack Valley High School, they're going to do the Loudon racetrack, and they're going to graduate in a car. So I love the way that you're doing this. What about tickets for the school board members?
If, so I'm not sure. I'm thinking that we can do that, because we're also going to need tickets for faculty. So that's an excellent question, and I will get back to you on that, okay?
Thank you. I appreciate all your work.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Jean, do you have anything?
Yeah, I wanted to make a motion to approve.
Is that Amy? Yep, Sandy, that was Amy that seconded. Is there any other, April, you've got something before we call the question?
Yes, just discussion. I don't know if we want to do discussion now. Is that good? We have the motion. Barbara, thank you for being here with tonight, and thank you for the dedication to our students that you've put in for many long years. There are two things here. I know that I read the memo, and one of the guidance that it gave as the example is the graduation of the US Air Force Academy. Now, we do know those are military officers, and there are consequences if they don't, just by being in the military, if they violate orders. We're dealing with students. How can we be assured that our students will stay within their social distancing bubble? Is there any ramifications to us if we, if students do not, and those students become potentially at risk?
You know, we can only control what's happening in the stadium. They have a separate entrance. There will be staff there. We can only control as much as we can control. And what can we take away from them? They've already lost so much. I mean, so ramifications, what, what, what could be a ramification? You know, they don't get to participate in their graduation. When they've lost their prom, they've lost their class trip, they've lost, they've lost their awards night, their convocation, their academic awards. They've lost all of this. So what we can do, staff and faculty at PA, is make sure that we support our students, and we're there with them. The way I have it set up, there will be 15 rows of students, and each, in each row, with each 15 students, and sometimes less, there will be an adult. And like I said, April, you know, I'm going to be spending some time making sure that I'm doing chats with kids, making sure that I do chats with families. Mr. Famulari is going to be sending out letters to families that will be published also on our webpage about what the rules and expectations are. And just like anything, you know, you know, you have to, you know, can I make people follow the rules? Well, I think that, in light of the fact that people think that we're going to have a graduation that's going to take place virtually, they're going to be thrilled that we can do this. I have to tell you, I did look at, at New Hampshire Motor Speedway, and I have a proposal for them. But we felt that graduating in a car is not as special as graduating at Fisher Cat Stadium. So that's, that's just, that's what I can tell you.
Thank you. My second question is, under the cost for rental of the Northeast Delta Dental Stadium, it says, "Any additional charges incurred at the event will be invoiced and paid no later than 30 days after the event." I'd like to know about what are some of the anticipated additional charges?
I don't have any. I don't have any anticipated charges.
So is there a reason why that's included? I mean, is there an example where they charged extra before?
I think that's probably their phrasing of their contracts. You know, I'm still work, you know, I'm still working on this project. I didn't want to spend, I've spent a ton of time already, and I just needed to make sure that I could have board approval before I went more forward. You see what I'm saying? Like, what, what might be a cost is, what might be a cost is, they might buy masks in case people don't bring their own masks. So they might charge us, you know, $30 for a box of masks. You know what I'm saying? They might charge us for hand sanitizer. But that hasn't come up. And believe me, I'm asking, I have another video conference with Stephanie on Thursday morning. I can tell her that we are moving ahead. You know, we can look at all of those.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If I could interject for a second and recognize Dan Morris, our curriculum director, he's mentioned in the chat that he could add something to the response of April's first question. Dan, can you unmute yourself?
April, I understand where you're coming from in terms of the social distancing. One of the things that we really liked about Fisher Cat Stadium was how conducive that layout was for us to ensure that there was social distancing. It's difficult from student to student when they're all in the same area on the field. But with the warning track, and with the fencing that goes around the infield, we can certainly prevent any, you know, any infractions in terms of social distancing between our students and other families and that sort of thing. So in terms of the environment, it is conducive for us to do that to the extent that we can.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just inject this?
Yep, go ahead.
I just wanted to just put out there that, on the budget line, the, what is allotted for graduation is $10,000. Didn't know if people felt more comfortable with knowing that number.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? I think I need a motion to.
I have one other question. It's April. My other question was, we heard from Mr. Valiumari about the parent Facebook group. And I'm just wondering, what is the feeling of people in the group about this possible graduation solution?
So I haven't, we haven't told anybody. This is, this has been a secret. We haven't, we haven't told anybody that this is what we're doing.
Thank you.
I can't imagine, I can't imagine that people are going to say they don't do this.
To piggyback off of that, and I would just, and I'm sure that you, this is already on your radar, Barbara, but just to say it so I feel better, I would just make sure that if there's consent forms needed or whatever for the live streaming portion, I know there's a lot of legality around people's images being streamed wherever, that we just keep cognizant of where we're broadcasting things and make sure we've got ourselves covered from a legal standpoint. Super great job. I appreciate everything that you've put into this.
You're welcome.
I don't want to belabor the discussion, but I just, I wanted to, April's question, I wanted to just explain that, you know, I'm in regular contact with that parent group on Facebook almost daily now at this point. And one of the things that I did communicate, I'm getting questions, you know, very frequently about what the progress is on graduation. One of the things that I communicated as recently as yesterday was, you know, we have intentions. Planning for graduation is at the forefront of our priorities. And one of the things that was important to me was to be mindful of the process in bringing this proposal to you folks first, before, you know, making any promises that we can't follow through on. And I think the parent Facebook group was receptive to that feedback and appreciative of our efforts, but they are also, I will say, clamoring for information. So if we're able to move forward with this proposal, that may kind of keep them at bay in terms of their level of anticipation and anxiety with what we're going to be doing for their seniors. So this would go a long way in kind of easing some of those anxieties. But at the same time, I wanted to be mindful that, you know, not to let the cat out of the bag, so to speak. Like Barbara said, we want this to be thoughtful and intentional and purposeful in planning.
Thanks, Paul.
Andy, you're off.
Thanks, Jean. Is there a motion to accept the proposal?
Yeah, we, we motioned.
Jean moved, and I, and Amy seconded.
Thank you. That was a long time ago.
One more thing concerning the social distancing. It's, you know, and I appreciate everyone's hard work on getting this set up. But, you know, for all the worry about social distancing infractions on the field during the graduation process, there may be some. And, you know, as the school board, as the faculty and administration, we have to look out for that and prevent it. But after that graduation is over, all bets are off. All right. So this is one of the, what goes on at that stadium, however minor it might be, these kids are graduating, and they're going to do what they want to do after that graduation. So if anyone has concerns and may not support this, just be realistic that after the graduation, whether it's virtual, whether it's a drive-by, or whether it's at Fisher Cat, the, the rules that we're expected to follow aren't going to apply to these kids. They're happy they're graduating. They want to be with their friends. So I just wanted to add that. And to move the question.
Excellent. So there was a motion to accept the proposal, seconded, and so on a roll call vote, we'll go with Jean because he's still on my screen.
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes, and thank you.
Anne? Anne?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you again, Barbara, for everything.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just had a quick follow-up question. In the future, can someone please let us know when this information can be shared publicly?
So in very general, and again, Patty, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been said at a meeting that's being streamed, it's technically public information now. And I think that we also heard this week that, and we'll talk about this in a little bit, but draft minutes can be posted after a certain number of days. And I know Sandy tries to get her minutes done as quickly as she can. So at this point, it's public information.
That is correct.
All right. So now, where'd my agenda go?
Oh, we have one more.
Consent agenda, right?
Yes. So the other planning that has been taking place, and I'll ask you to recognize Dan Morris, I believe he's planning to speak about this. There are a lot of parents anxious to hear about PYL. It's the opportunity that the students have to come to Pembroke Academy, meet the students from other towns, walk around the building. It's, you know, can be scary, especially to our feeder towns. So a lot of time and effort has gone into figuring out what we might be able to do for those students. I did share a proposed schedule. When Dan and I spoke, I did caution him that the timeline was ambitious, and we need to wait and.
I did caution him that the timeline was ambitious and we need to wait and see what the guidance is. It may or may not change. Um, July 6th feels a little bit soon. So we may or may not be able to stick to the, to the schedule, but I think, um, or stick to the dates. But I think the concept is a good one. And, um, I'll let Dan speak a little bit if that's okay.
Dan, if you're still with us, you've got the floor.
All right. Thank you. Uh, yeah, I mean, we have, we always have anxious parents of our incoming freshmen. And P Y L is a great transitional program, uh, for our students. We want to continue to offer that while still balancing social distancing guidelines. And then the other confound to this is that, uh, parents can choose between three different sessions. And they do that to work around summer plans. And so part of maintaining our, our original session dates was, uh, to honor their plans and not, you know, once we start moving that around, it becomes harder for families to sign up, uh, and for the students to participate. So what we've decided to propose is a, in, in a student experience that is shorter. It would be, uh, four half-days, uh, for the students. And the reason for that is it allows us to have smaller numbers. You know, when you have 20 students, but they have to be six feet apart, that eats up a lot of space pretty quickly. And it also makes it a little more challenging from a supervisory standpoint. Uh, so the first session has 59 students signed up for it. And the only way that we can safely accommodate that is to break this up into, um, an afternoon session and a morning session of uh, 20 students each. And then those 20 students are broken up into clusters of 10. Again, to just continue to mitigate, uh, any concerns regarding social distancing. So, you know, we would have that, um, originally parents signed up for a two-week session. You know, we need to try to compromise in terms of our timeline so that we can, you know, offer P Y L, uh, at least the essentials of P Y L and still do that while observing social distancing. Additionally, we would want to use the exterior of the building as much as possible. Uh, if the state guidelines come out and it would be appropriate for us to use the cafeteria or the gym, we would try to do that. Uh, in the event that we can and we are outside, uh, if there was inclement weather, I'd get on the horn in the morning with one call now and, uh, tell, uh, parents of that particular session that they, they're going to stay home today.
Does anybody have any, Dan, if you don't mind, um, taking some questions?
Again, I'll make a motion to approve. Open discussion.
I'll, I'll second that for the sake of discussion.
Andy, I have a question.
Sure.
Is this going to add to the number of staffing that we normally budget for? In order to, when we need to split these classes up?
Uh, it won't. Um, so the reason that we can, we can shorten the student experience, uh, while still maintaining social distancing, um, really part of the impetus for that is so that we can continue to have the same staffing levels.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Dan, do you, do students receive any credit, um, for this time that they spend in P Y L? And how important is that? To their academic.
They receive 1.25 credits. Uh, in addition to that, they're typically in a traditional, uh, P Y L experience. There's also a lot of, uh, time and focus on the summer reading component. And, um, there is an opportunity for students to earn 1.25 additional credits, uh, based on summer reading. I would maintain that we, uh, continue to offer 1.25 credits. I think that we can supplement our on-campus experience with additional programming that students can access. Not during their time on campus, and that would allow them to get the 1.25 credits while still getting the essentials of P Y L. Um, I will tell you that historically, the participation rate of, uh, incoming students in our Pushing Your Limits program is very high. And the reason for that is it's, it's well-run and it's a really important transitional experience for the students.
Andy, I have another question. This is Anne. I just have a, a quick question. If something happens and we have stricter guidelines now, is there something that we can do remotely if then, God forbid, it gets to.
No, I understand. I, I think that we would have to essentially, you know, in working with the program coordinator, uh, we have three contingencies. We have, uh, we're running it as if nothing was going on. I think that's unlikely. Uh, we're running some kind of a hybrid abbreviated schedule, which is what I'm proposing tonight. Or we're running something that is almost entirely remote, which I'm hoping isn't likely. Uh, I certainly would want to try to avoid that. I think there is, uh, some importance to them being on campus. From a trans- transitional standpoint, uh, but we, we would follow the guidelines. So if those change, then we have to make accommodations to adhere to those.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Dan, I guess, um, talked about what you're proposing now versus something that could be mostly done remotely. Is there, I know you talked at the beginning about scheduling and how that can be difficult for the parents and stuff. Is it kind of, if this is going to happen on July 6th and the other dates, or we're going to do remotely? Or is there still a possibility that if, if July 6th is out, we could, you know, try to squeeze it at the end of the month or beginning of August, something like that?
So there are three sessions and those sessions are two-week chunks. So with, uh, those three sessions, we're actually into August anyway. You know, so if, I think what we would have to do is commit to the dates and the experience would have to change based on the guidelines. And that's partly so that we can fit it into the summer, but also, you know, if we start moving things around, uh, with parents and schedules, it becomes very difficult.
Uh, April?
Thank you, Andy. Um, so we know that our superintendent has closed our buildings. Would it be possible to ask our superintendent how she feels about students and staff in the building for P Y L? Whether that be, uh, running as normal or a hybrid model?
Patty, do you want to chime in?
Sure. Thank you. Um, we've actually been talking as a leadership team about slowly, um, allowing people back into the building, understanding that there's going to be need for teachers to pack up their rooms. There's going to be need for office, um, essential employees to get in and do some work. So we have already started loosening, um, that restriction very, very slowly. And we are working closely with the guidelines as Dan said. And, um, we have to follow those and we have to put all the safety procedures in place, um, that have been published by the C D C. So as long as we're on the same page with the guidelines, then I'm, I'm comfortable with a program happening.
Thanks. Um, are there any other discussion points before we move the question?
Andy, it's April. I have another question, uh, for Dan. I'm just curious, is, is board approval being sought more to run the P Y L program than to decide how it will be run? Just what kind of approval is being sought from the board tonight?
Uh, well, I mean, my proposal is that we continue with the dates as they were originally designed. But that we are changing the model in terms of delivery. The student experience is going to be significantly shorter. Um, we think that we can modify the curriculum in order to give them their essentials. But, you know, given the context and, um, you know, the nature of the proposal being that students would be on campus. I, you know, Patty and I felt like it would be important for the board to hear about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Um, so we have a motion to accept. That's been seconded, um, on a roll call vote. I'll start with Amy this time. Anne?
Yes.
Can I ask one more question before voting? I just have a question on if any guidance has been offered, or this is just anticipation of future guidance. And I'm talking about guidance from the state DOE. Particularly to these dates.
I'm not sure who's best to answer that question. I know the guidance from the state is changing pretty much hourly.
Yeah, we, we don't have any updated guidance at this point. Um, we, I think the next guidance that we'll see, barring any, um, significant changes, would be suggestions on re-entry in the fall and what that might look like. There's a, a task force that the commissioner, um, has formed with approximately 50 participants. Um, but I don't know of any other interim guidance unless, like I said, something significant changes.
Thank you. That's very helpful. My vote is a no.
And I'm a yes. Did I forget anybody? I kind of lost track there. I think I got everybody. Did I get you in?
Didn't get me.
You didn't get Jean.
Anybody? Jean?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your input, Dan. And with that, um, if I could, I guess, go off script just a little bit. Anne, you had a question about eighth grade graduation and looking at the agenda, probably now is the best time to throw that out there, I suppose.
I didn't know when we were discussing, um, you know, the P A graduation. I didn't know if there was any thoughts about the eighth grade graduation or is, was it just certificates being mailed home to the children? I did have a couple of residents ask me about that.
Mr. Marston, are you still with us? Do you want to comment on that?
I'm here. We are, we are, obviously it's not anything to the magnitude of what the, the high school senior goes through, but we are working on a couple of things, uh, which frankly aren't public until right now, I guess. We're going, we have, uh, with help of pals, we've designed and purchased, uh, we're in the process of having the lawn signs made and we're going to deliver those to each eighth grader. We're also putting together a video, uh, that will do basically a virtual awards, the academic awards we do. And then we're also going to, um, I've spoken with the, uh, chief of police, uh, and we'll, we, he's supporting us to do a drive-by the front of the school to pick up a cer- the certificate, um, and maybe have a quick photo op and then out they go. Uh, I'm not particularly convinced that eighth graders are going to be able to maintain social distancing, to be honest with you. So I think that's probably the best way we can do it. And also, uh, not unlike what other schools are doing.
I just wanted to find out that the board would be notified so we could attend also.
Yeah, we'll put, uh, we're, we're very close to wrapping that, the, the process up. We're just trying to figure out the, uh, the traffic pattern. And to make sure that we're not creating, uh, you know, a major issue on the evening that we do that. Uh, but when we send that out, I will send that, the information out to the board members.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right. Um, agenda item four D, budget update. Patty, do you want to start? You want to go right to Amber?
Um, Amber's here. We can go right to her.
All right. You still muted?
I apologize. I did not hear the question. I was asking my kiddo to please quiet down.
Uh, we're, we're on to four, we're on to, um, four D, which is the budget update. So if you want to give us the quick hit.
There hasn't been much change since the last time we spoke, um, as you know, and as we spoke about, the budget is frozen. So really only any changes coming through at this point are, um, any POs that we may have closed or any invoices that may have come in that we hadn't received yet. But the, the amounts really have not differed much from the last time we've spoken.
Thank you. Um, I'll just add a, a quick note in here. I've seen some, some questions, um, directed to me about other, you know, projects that have been going on that obviously cost money. And the, you know, the budget being frozen. So just for the public's sake, if I say anything wrong, Amber, jump in and correct me. But obviously in a, in a budget this large and in planning things, um, there's money that is spent well ahead of time for certain projects. So, you know, some of the things that have been brought up recently are, are some of the building things that have been done out near Pembroke Street as far as new windows and new siding. Um, and, you know, a lot of those things have already been planned and paid for and, um, just needed to be scheduled to be done because obviously you don't do windows in the middle of the winter. So I would say anybody in the, out there in the public that has concerns about that sort of thing, um, certainly don't be afraid to ask. That's, that's not my intention is to stop you from asking. Um, but just be aware that we are all trying to be as physically responsible as possible. We're not taking on new projects at this time, but there are still things that are, you know, happening. And, and I assume there's some things that are happening maybe a little bit easier because the buildings are empty and, and there's a little more opportunity to have, um, access to them. So just wanted to.
That is accurate. The other thing that we, you know, that we ask is that when they have things planned and they know when they're going to purchase them, we ask them to encumber the funds as soon as they can. So that really helps us as we're going through the monthly projections to see where we're at. So if they waited to encumber the money right before they were going to spend it, um, then we, it would really throw off projections as we're going through the, through the year. So they encumber the money and then they purchase the items or schedule whatever they need to be scheduled. And then should it not come to the exact amount that they had anticipated, we reduce the P O, um, and so forth. Also around this time of year, this is our, getting into our year end. So there's a, we, uh, continuously review all POs that are on our aging report, um, to ensure that we still need the full amount and we revise as needed and close as needed.
Thanks. Um, I'll say, it doesn't sound like there's a ton of updates. So I, I will encourage everybody to be mindful of the hour. Um, but certainly if there are questions from board members for Amber, now is the time.
Andy, I have a question. Not sure if it's, um, directed to, um, Amber or not, but the, we're talking concerning the 2021 budget is the selectmen have not heard back from the school board yet from the April 21st meeting. And it sounded like in that meeting that it was going to be forthcoming quickly. Is, do we have any update on that? Or do we need to wait to another meeting?
Um, no, I guess I'm not entirely sure what you're referencing. I know there was the, the questions that came, um, from the select board. And I think Patty responded to those. Um, was there, are you, do you mean when we could invite them back again? Is that your question?
No, Patty has already sent the answers to the school board because when we were talking about it, we weren't going to have, um, I suggested not to have a whole new write-up, just send a synopsis of the meeting. And that was already sent to the, the selectmen. We had a meeting last night and it was discussed that they hadn't received it yet.
I thought we were going to let them look at the minutes because it would all be contained in the minutes. Did I misunderstand that?
Correct.
I understood.
Yes, I thought that we're going to do a recap and send that information to the select. That's how it's written in, in the minutes too. So, um, I would just, they asked me, I have a question again this evening, and also they haven't heard about the, uh, payment schedules yet for 2021.
Patty, I've worked with David on those.
Yeah, I think that was done. Can we ask Amber if it was sent?
Tom, to my knowledge it was. I will check with Christine, but she did complete it. So, um, I will double check to make sure that she sent them.
Okay. And I can take the action, um, and just, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. I will, I'm taking a note right now. I will send, um, David an email and ask him to relay the information to the select board that we did discuss all of the questions at, um, whatever the date that meeting was, I'll look it up. And to encourage them to check out either the video or the minutes, I can't remember if there was a video from that time, just to make sure that they know that that information is available. Is that, is that sufficient?
Yeah. And just to let him know that there's nothing, uh, synopsis coming from Patty then. Just so he's not looking for the answer from back from Patty, just say that it's, the answer's coming from you.
Sure. And, um, Amber, if it's okay, if, if this is not a misrepresentation, I'll include a note in there that, um, that the budget projection is basically unchanged from the last time that we talked about it. And it was somewhere in the neighborhood just south of, of $500,000 total. Is that?
Yeah. Well, last time we were at 509 and we're at 494 now. So there has been small changes.
Okay, I'll, I'll take that and I'll have that out tomorrow.
Andy, I just wanted to bring up one thing also when we're talking about budget is that municipal board, New Hampshire Municipal Association is going to bring a proposal to the governor to relax the emergency meeting rules. So there could be a chance and there's very high chance that residents are going to call for another special meeting to change the budgets of what was voted on for the town and also the school. So I just wanted to put it out there that the budgets that we have now may change within the next month. I just thought I'd throw it out to you.
Thanks. I know David had mentioned that, but it's good to know that that's still a consideration.
Andy, this is Amy. I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose track of, we also discussed and agreed that we would send the backup materials as well. And that's reflected in the minutes. So the super helpful reports that Amber puts together and just sort of, you know, the backup stuff for, that goes alongside with our discussion.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other questions for Amber before we move on?
I did have one more question when we were discussing the budget. Is this the point where we're going to discuss about the hourly employees? Because this is 2019, 20 budget?
Patty, is that, is that something that needs to be discussed in non-public? I guess I'm not sure where, I guess it depends on the discussion. If it's just a motion, what we're going to do about it, it's probably fine. If it's anything more specific than that, it's probably not.
I thought that the way we had left it was we had requested further information.
It was also being discussed in non-public, so.
Yeah, I'm trying to be very careful here. You go ahead.
It was discussed in non-public, so at this point.
Andy, I'm divulging to you as the chair. Would that fall under the 91 dash A colon three, Roman number two, a small letter A? Since it's about the dismissal, promotion, compensation or discipline, disciplining of an employee or the investigation of any charges against him slash her?
Yeah, I'm leaning towards that being compensation and we have another non-public session scheduled for the end of, of the meeting. I, I think I would definitely feel more comfortable talking about it in there. All right, other questions for Amber?
Thanks, Amber.
Most welcome.
Thank you. So we will move on. I'm sorry, Anne, you kind of cut out there.
Okay, yeah, I lost you too. I did have one more question for Amber. When we're discussing the 2021 budget and the payment schedule that we're going to be asking the town to send, is feasible for the school board to get a, a list of information of what is being paid monthly? So we can make judgments if, if that's something that we can put off to another month?
Um, I'm not sure. I, I would, yes, I would have to look at it. I mean, I think I need to speak with Patty about that. I'm not sure what we would give. I mean, we could give it, I mean, you do see the manifest each month. So those are the types of items that are paid. I'm not sure what else we would give. I guess, can you be a little more specific?
Right, it would, I was looking at not the items that are paid, but what's coming up. So if, if there's an item coming up, we can say, well, we, can we wait three months to do this item or put this item off another couple of months if the town is, is now having less and less income?
I would think it would make sense to maybe review, it's up to the board, maybe review the fiscal year budget together. You know, maybe once the school year is over before we start spending funds out of the next budget to kind of go through and look at what projects we had planned and see if there are things like you said that we want to put off.
Yeah, because the big expense that come through is obviously payroll. Other items certainly, like exactly like Patty just said, the items that are kind of a little more in our control are items that, projects that we may have planned that we maybe could put off to a later time. But the majority of those submissions are covering what the payroll is.
We did put in the prioritized list. I think you guys asked Josh to prioritize the project list and we had talked about the asbestos abatement being extremely important. So that is something that we consider too. Like Amber said, those tend, the projects tend to be the greatest expense other than payroll.
Okay, I just wanted to, just to give the board some information is that the amounts that the town is budgeting as revenue coming in is falling quite short. And this is only second month into the pandemic and they just cut our interest rate for the amount of money that we hold in the bank. So instead of getting, you know, 5,000, we're lucky we're getting 1,000. So the amount of money coming in as revenue for the town is going down. So we are sending the tax bill, there are, they are in the, at the printer now. But I just wanted, just to get the school board some information is that the revenues is going down quickly.
Thanks for that. And I've, I've got something that's kind of pertinent to this and too that will fall in the next agenda item, I think. So I'll write a note to make sure that I remember to mention that.
Thank you.
Looking at mute symbols. Anybody else want to ask Amber anything before we move on?
This is April. I just have a clarifying question. Amber, first off, I want to say thank you for being here tonight. I had in my notes that we were advised at the 5-5 meeting that the school district requests to the towns were reworked by you and Christine. And you believe those have already been sent out as well? So Pembroke should have theirs.
I thought that they were. I know I reviewed them.
Okay.
And so I, and I'm sending a message to Christine, who's the one that sends that out to David to see if it was sent. I'm hoping it didn't get stuck in her drafts or something like that, but I know I reviewed it. So I just, I just need to be verified that it was actually sent. But if it was not, I will be sure he gets it first thing tomorrow morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks, Amber.
You're welcome.
We're going to move on to agenda item four E, agenda development. I'm going to turn that over to Patty, but first I just wanted to add a real quick note, the thing that I just mentioned to Anne. This is maybe not specifically agenda development, but it's close enough. I'm looking at the board meeting schedule for the remainder of this school year. We only have one scheduled meeting left on the books for sometime in June. I think it's the ninth, but I can't remember for sure. But if you look at that document, there's also a line under there that says goal setting. Goal setting might be a little bit difficult to do in June because we don't really know what September is going to look like yet. So I kind of had it in my head that maybe we would want to schedule a goal setting meeting for before we start our regular meetings back up in September. I'm wondering if we want to piggyback on that meeting and also discuss some, try to, try to take a cursory glance at the big ticket items and projects in the budget for the following school year in that same meeting. It might be, it's a kind of abnormal meeting anyway. It doesn't necessarily follow the regular routine. Maybe we could stick that sort of big ticket item budget review on, on the goal setting meeting. So just something for you guys to think about, not confirm the action or decision right now, but that's something that popped into my head.
Andy, I have a question. Why is it June 9th when our typical calendar is the first and third month, Tuesday of the month?
I honestly can't answer that. The, we made the schedule a while back and I would have to go back and look at my notes. It could, it could have been because something got moved from a holiday or it might've had to do when graduation was originally scheduled. I, I can't tell you for sure, Anne.
I'm, I'm actually glad that you brought that up. And Andy, can I just speak to that?
Absolutely.
Um, since we're in the middle of trying to hire a significant number of teachers, I was going to make the request that we have a meeting in two weeks. Because we have, I have some more interviews to conduct and I would love to get those people on board sooner rather than later.
What's the date of two weeks? Is that the second?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to amend the?
Shouldn't have a meeting on June 2nd.
On 2nd.
I guess for discussion, I would just, are we talking about, and maybe Jean, clarify your motion. Are we talking about moving to June 9th to June 2nd or are we talking about adding an additional meeting?
At this point, I would, my motion is to add an additional meeting for June 2nd, being that Patty is going through the process. And it may or may not be done by June 2nd. So that last meeting is very important because there's nothing after that until, you know, we're not seeing anything after that probably until the beginning of August. So I don't want to eliminate the June 9th meeting, but to add an additional meeting for June 2nd to expedite the hiring of teachers that we need to.
I second that emotion, that motion. How late is it?
Okay, if you guys don't mind, I'm just going to go ahead and call the vote on that. I think, I don't know that it requires a ton of discussion. Amy?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Just want to clarify, the motion is to add six two as an additional meeting, not, not necessarily cancel six nine.
Correct.
Thank you. I just had to check my calendar. I'm a yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
I'm a yes too.
I just have one quick question.
First.
Calendar for the next scheduled meetings.
It's in the drive. I can't tell you exactly where, but I can make a note to send you the link or the name of the folder or something.
I'm not, I don't think it's finalized yet. And there were some conflicts. If we stuck to the regular meeting schedule, Kathy had highlighted some conflicts between the districts and the SAE board meetings. So we need to resolve those before we can put it out.
You mean for next school year, Anne?
Um, no, the next school board meetings.
Yeah, that, that one's there.
Yeah, if you go.
I think it ends in June.
Yeah, it's just, it literally says June 9th and then goal setting.
Yeah, so I, no. And do you guys take July off?
Yes, we typically do.
Pretty much, unless there's something needs to be addressed.
I was actually just making a note. I'll just read it. I was going to send it to Andy, but I'll, I'll just go for it here. So for future board meetings, I assumed that this was a year-long gig and we would meet all year long. I feel like there's a good deal in flux and we have plenty of work to do. I think we need to meet at least one time monthly in July and August, but I'd be in support of actually meeting two times in June, July and August. And I think we need to get the schedule settled, not at this meeting, but at, by our next meeting.
I second Amy. I just think we have a lot going on and it's constantly changing. Basically, the governor gets on and tells us what we can and can't do. And all of a sudden, if we wait till August and then we can't get our kids back into the physical classroom within that couple of weeks, I think we might be in trouble.
Okay, I understand all that. I think I would say, I don't think Amy made a motion. So let's, could we maybe say that agenda for next, next meeting, I'm sorry, we'll go with the agenda, yeah, the agenda for the next meeting for six two now, which is the next meeting. We will discuss a summer calendar and, you know, maybe we can take it one meeting at a time. Maybe we can get a bunch on the books, however we want to do it. But we can talk about that next time around about, about how we want to do that. I know some, some of it has been scheduling in the summertime has been difficult, but if people can't go anywhere this summer, maybe it won't be so difficult.
Thanks, Andy. That sounds great to me.
Okay, I will, I've got to circle around that to ask Kathy to add that for next time. So four E agenda development, so that was actually my thing. I don't know why I was going to turn it over to Patty. I guess this is, this is more of just a informational thing. I, I've got some ideas about how to change our agenda and I don't have them formalized enough yet to go into a whole lot of detail tonight. I did attend the new board chair webinar last night. It was very informative. I was kind of worried with it being all online, but I learned a lot. So some of the stuff, and this is just spitballing to kind of get you guys to where my head is at and things that you might see suggested at the next meeting or even after that, because this is certainly not urgent. Minutes can be part of the consent agenda. I think that might make things go a little bit quicker unless there are particular questions. I think, obviously, the, the last few meetings have run quite long. I think we're doing a little bit better tonight. And one of the suggestions that was made was that the chair can kind of put goal times on each item. And those are not hard and fast, but if, you know, kind of like where it says public comments on the agenda, it says 15 minutes. That one, because it's the public, is kind of a hard deadline. But if I can go through each item and, and kind of say, okay, we should be spending about 10 or 15 minutes on this. Obviously, if a good conversation develops, I'm not going to cut people off or anything like that. But I think if we have some sort of guideline and roughly how long each item might take, maybe it'll prevent us from getting in the weeds a little bit and, and we can be a little bit more efficient with our time. Some boards have hard outs. They say this is a two-hour meeting and when two hours comes, the current discussion wraps up and, and they move on. I think we still have quite a bit of business going on, especially with, with new members and the virus and everything like that. I'm not sure if I want to go that route yet, but it's something for you all to consider. But anyway, really what I wanted to say is sometime before we adjourn for the summer now, adjourn for the summer. I'd like to have a discussion about the agenda and ways that if you guys have a creative ideas of, you know, how to organize it better. I'm certainly new to being a chair, so I'm open to any and all suggestions on how to make the meetings flow well and to make sure that everybody is getting their fair say and getting the chance to express their questions and their feelings appropriately. So really, that's all that I wanted to discuss in that one.
Andy, this is April. I just want to talk about the times real quick. In my experience working, and there's been a dedicated timekeeper. And it's not that the chair just makes that decision at, we consent, well, when, on committees that I'm on, you consent to the agenda and then the timekeeper tells you, you have so many minutes to wrap it up. And if the board can vote to exceed that time, it's not one person, but it's the board can vote to exceed that time or not. So that's generally how it's worked when I've been kind of trying to move things along as an effective meeting.
Thank you. That sounds reasonable.
Andy, I have a question. Agenda development, what I'm concerned about is when we put the agenda, when we type up the agenda before all the items are finalized. My big concern was May 12th. I never want to come to a meeting and be surprised. And by four o'clock yesterday afternoon, I did not see May 12th minutes out there. I know minutes are hard, so I'm not saying anything about that. But if we could, when we make the agenda, if we're putting minutes on there, can we be sure that when the agenda is put together, that the minutes are out there that we can, we can verify? We've had residents comment that we're not ready to approve minutes. So I don't think it's fair to us. I'm, I feel like I'm being set up for a failure if it's on here and I don't have a chance to, to even participate in what is being asked of me.
Yep, I can do that. I'll take the blame on that one. And typically Sandy is so good about getting the minutes out there. I've never looked and not found them before. Sandy wasn't at our last meeting, so that felt Patty. So it was a little bit out of the ordinary. I can tell you, in all honesty, having the minutes out there by the time the next agenda is reviewed has, in my short 14, 15 months on the board, has not been a problem before. So I don't expect it to be a problem again. But as the person that is, is charged with approving the agenda, I can certainly, you know, be a little more careful and go in the drive and make sure that all of those things are, are there for people when I approve it. Is charged with approving the agenda, I can certainly, you know, be a little more careful and go in the drive and make sure that all of those things are, are there for people when I approve it.
Is there a timeframe that the minutes are approved before the board is expected to review them? Um, on the, in the boards that I sit on, the minutes are there a week before the meeting. Um, I'm, I am saying it a thousand times, minutes are very tough to do. So I'm, I'm not pressuring anybody to get them done on time. But I just looking to see if there's a timeline that they would be out there for us to review.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything hard and fast. Um, the next agenda item addresses minutes a little bit. I, I mentioned this briefly before. Another suggestion, and I guess I would be interested to hear some feedback from all of you if you agree or not. The feedback that, or a suggestion that was made last night from the School Board Association is. Minutes that are, are very much transcripts, which is what ours have been historically are. Tough to approve. It takes quite a keen eye to, you know, remember all the details and basically the more details that you have included, the more, the better your memory has to be to say, you know, is that how, just how that was worded? Is that exactly what I meant? It, it opens it up to much more discussion, um, and can lead to difficult approvals. Um, the suggestion was that. First of all, the RSA only stipulates a couple of things, basically topic of conversation and in any official actions. That are taken as a result of that discussion. And they didn't advocate for that bare minimum, but. What they said was we used to really want detailed minutes. We used to tell people they should have very detailed minutes because. That's the public's window into the meeting if they were able to attend, but now in this age, um, where our meetings are recorded. In the case where our meeting is recorded, um, their suggestion was for the minutes to be much closer to that end of the spectrum where. Um, you know, we, on agenda item four B, we talked about X. And there was a motion and here's, you know, here's the result of the roll call vote, et cetera. Knowing that if a member of the public misses this meeting, they would go to the minutes and if they found a discussion that they were particularly interested. They now have the opportunity to go and view a full recording of the meeting and actually listen to that discussion, which is. In all cases, going to be more useful for that citizen than, um. Anyway, uh, that resonated with me. I, I liked it. Um, I certainly appreciate. Everything Sandy puts into this and, and her minutes are amazing. Um, but I think especially, you know, when we are having four hour meetings, um. 27 pages is a lot to go through, uh, and it puts a lot of pressure on us. It's a lot of time outside meetings that we have to set, spend reviewing those things. And again, for me, by page 20. You know, I can't remember exactly how people worded things at, at the meeting a week or two ago anyway. So, so that's kind of where I'm at. I, I guess I'd be anxious to hear what all of you have to say to that end.
Can I go, Andy?
Sure.
Um, I understand what you're saying. And I certainly don't think that our minutes need to be like the transcript type, you know, then Amy said she thinks that, you know. But the formal, legal, official record of this board's business. Is the minutes and only the minutes, not an audio recording, not a video recording, not a, you know, link on Facebook. Um, it's just the minutes. And so I, you know, just using like 27 page minutes as an example. I would be totally fine if those minutes were like somewhere between 18 and 22 pages long, you know, we, we can streamline it a little bit. But I don't think that I would be supportive of going as far as what I think you're contemplating. Because the minutes are our only record.
Okay, thanks.
Andy, this is April. I would, um, I do support what Amy is saying. I understand there's a minimum, but our minutes are a record. Of the decisions that this board has made and it's helpful not only to the community, but certainly to new board members historically looking back. So, um, I totally support that. I would not want to see us go willy nilly. Um, what it sounds like you're saying to me is we need to review our policy on the minutes. Um, I heard Anne ask about that. B E D G is the policy on the minutes. It does, it, there's no time period. It just says minutes to public meetings shall be at minimum in, oh, I'm like, anyway, re- read that policy. It talks about. They just had to be provided before the meeting and I agree, Anne, before the meeting is not enough time for us to review the minutes. So it sounds like this is a policy review issue that we may have on hand. And B E D G dash R is access to minutes and public records. So those kind of go hand in hand. So policy review may be what we want to look at.
Thanks.
And Andy, I just wanted to type in, pipe, uh, chime in is when you were saying that it's hard for you to remember, you know, what was said here and there. Um, I believe I sit on a lot of boards and that's the reason why we have each board member review the minutes because. I'm not what Amy said, but I'm gonna remember what I said. So that's why we're all taking part and. Are responsible for looking through the information on, on what we recall. So it's, it's a team effort. We're not looking for you to remember every word.
Thanks. All right. Thanks, everybody. Um, so that was really all I wanted to discuss on for E, so we can move on to for F. Minutes. Um, I think Patty, you had some information as far as what the RSA said about that?
Sure. So there was conversation at the last meeting about, um, the board's willingness to post drafts, um, minutes. And I just wanted to get back to you all and let you know that, um, some of you I'm sure already know this, but they're, um, subject to write to know after five days. So whether or not the board wants to post them, that's your decision. We can certainly do that if you'd like us to, but. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that if a pu- if a member of the public requested them, we do need to provide them. So I think the conversation is really about whether or not the board wants us to proactively post them, um, when they're available for the public to look at.
This is April and I would like to mo- make a motion that we publicly post our draft minutes and give. Members of the community an opportunity to review them before they're approved without having to take the extra step of having to request those in writing.
This is Amy. I second that.
Is there any discussion?
Andy, I have a discussion. Um, if, um, non-public minutes would be in this category or is that something separate?
So Patty, help me if I don't sum this up right. Um, we, we had a conversation with the New Hampshire School Board Association attorney. Regarding how, you know, basically to see if we were, were doing the non-public minutes correctly after the discussion that we had at the last meeting. And. It seems there's a few ways to do it. Um, and. General notes, general minutes that. Remove the. I guess, uh, impetus for going in. So, so we could, we could include it in the normal minutes. Something like, eh, in non-public session, we discussed, um, nominations of employees. And not use any names or positions or anything like that. And if we did that, we can. Include those in the regular minutes, so then they would be part of those same draft minutes. I think at this point, I would say, eh, April brought up the policy. I think we need to get it on an agenda fairly soon to review. Minutes as a policy in general and include a discussion about non-public minutes in, in that agenda item. So is everybody okay with going that route?
Yes. Does, does that mean that we're not gonna vote on whether to post draft minutes tonight?
I think, I mean, that motion is still on the floor. I, I can't, I can't cancel it. Um, I, I guess. So to that point, the immediate issue, Anne, I'm not 100% sure. The non-public minutes, the, the. Actual information in non-public is not going to be shared. So if non-public minutes were posted as draft minutes, they would be generalized. Um, so I'm not sure if that completely answers your question or not.
Well, I, I, we have to vote to seal the, the minutes because if we don't vote to seal the minutes before the meeting is over. Then that information's not getting residents that that was sealed. So, you know, but I don't know. How long the school board holds minutes, um, even non-public after someone is hired that should be made public because. That's not non-public anymore because the person standing in front of your child in the classroom.
Right. I actually discussed the other night, uh, two and, and it was suggested that we either. Um, start to put a time limit on how long things are sealed for, or that we do a, a. Regular review of the non-public minutes to, to, uh. Decide if we can unseal them or whatever. So, um. Again, I think we need to have a bigger discussion about all of our minutes.
Let's move the question right now. It's on the table. We move the question on the table.
Yep. So, um, the motion is to approve posting of the draft minutes. After five days. Public consumption.
Five business days, correct? Five business days?
I honestly don't know if it's specified. There's, anybody have the RSA in front of them?
It's five days.
Okay, because our policy, our current policy says five business days. So, okay, very well, five days.
The current policy says five business days, that's what. You can't violate the policy unless we change the policy, correct?
Well, the policy says, uh, has to respond within five business days of the requests, so. I just want to make sure that we're giving ample time, how soon those minutes can be available that. Sometimes business can make a difference.
I believe the RSA that Patty quoted says that they are, they are publicly, they're, fall under right to know after five days. So I. I don't know if we need to specify the exact number of days after they've become, after the meeting that they need to be posted. I think we would just. Agree that they should be posted and we would encourage Kathy to have them posted as close to five days as is reasonable.
That makes sense to me.
So I think the, I think the current question is, are we, are we, there's a motion to approve the posting of draft minutes before they've been approved by the board. Um, so Jean?
Oh, I didn't hear you. No.
Amy? I didn't get that either. I don't know what's going on.
We're fast muters and unmuters. Yes.
April?
Yes.
Didn't get it, Anne, sorry.
Oh, I didn't even hear you call me. Yes.
Uh, and I'm a no. Um, so the motion carries.
This is Amy. Can I make a, um, request? Uh, before we discuss the, our board policy on minutes. I would like, um, you or Patty or whoever of us to ask the School Board Association for a copy of their most recent version of that policy, please. Thank you.
Otherwise I will forget. Okay, um, so with that out of the way, we will move to an item four G facilities projects. Is Josh still awake?
Hope so. Um, so we did what you asked at the last meeting and this again sort of goes back to Anne's question about, um. Projects and when the spending will occur in the next fiscal year. Um, so Josh did rank his projects in order of importance and I'm not sure. I think tonight, maybe it would be great if we could get a commitment or a vote on the board, um, regarding his number one. Rated items, especially the asbestos abatement, um, because those are more difficult to schedule and, and get contractors to commit and do that. You know, if you want to. Andy?
One, one second, Anne. Um, I'm, I just want to make sure that I understand correctly. Do we need to take action on these specifically because the budget is frozen or if these are for next year's budget and they're things that are scheduled? Why, I, I don't recall having to approve individual expenditures, um, in this manner before Patty, can you just explain the situation a little bit?
Sure, there's, um, I, my understanding was that the board wanted to have the conversation about the budget next year and that the request was made, um, to consider postponing spending. So. There's no action required by the board. Um, but if you wanted to take action and give the direction to slow the spending or to only do certain projects. Um, that's at the board's prerogative. Otherwise we would have planned to move forward with all of our projects, um, over the summer.
Can I ask another background question? Can you just real quickly, um, summarize what trust and project mean?
Sure. So the project line is money that's been budgeted for within our budget. And the trust is the, um, trust funds that have already been set up and have funds in them. So when you withdraw the money from the trust, it doesn't impact your operating budget. It just lowers the amount in the trust fund.
Anne, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Um, I, my question is that. The asbestos abatement and floor replacement, why isn't that coming out of trust? Because you can do physical building repairs out of trust. And you do have a line here that's saying that replacement of floors, number one under P A, that's coming out of the trust. So why doesn't the asbestos come out of trust?
Patty, do you want me to answer that?
I mean, yeah, it, the board has developed the budget, but if Josh has information on why we did it that way, I'm, that's fine.
The, the only reason we did it that way is because through the trust, the previous history has. Throughout our year, we're gonna, we're getting into it, um, as of the last couple of years. So we just, our history hasn't been to put the abatements into those trust lines. They've been to put them into the project lines. Or to do them in a bigger major, uh, a bigger broader.
The motion to change the amount of project into trust?
Think you can.
Anne? Changing the voter approved budget?
Yeah, I don't believe you can. Those, those are, yeah, those are in the budget, the budget lines. I mean. I guess we.
We aren't able to move them out of budget into trust. But if you feel more comfortable going through and getting the authorization from the trustees of the trust funds.
So really. The way that I understand it. Down at the school meeting is only the dollar amount of, of the budget and what we have to spend. So I don't think that, you know, we didn't vote on particular like items. I don't believe that it precludes us from. Making these types of changes, but I guess I'm not 100% certain on that.
Andy?
Yes, Jean.
Oh, actually Patty, you probably can answer it better than I can.
So I think, um, what you would want to consider, Anne's right, you can decide to take this money out of the trust fund. You have an existing trust fund, so you could complete the project and as long as it was approved by the trustees and it fit the definition. You could decide to withdraw after a public hearing, withdraw the money from the trust fund. Um, I think the bigger issue that you may want to think about is that Josh had a pretty big capital plan. With money put into those trust funds each year for pretty big projects, um, and sort of a savings plan, if you will. So before you did that, you may want to look at his list because that would probably either kick something out or throw something off in terms of the dates.
Right. And that's, that's my concern is.
What I was gonna say.
Thanks, Jean.
And I would think you put this, we have all the information.
I can agree with that. We don't need any action tonight anyhow. So I think that this is very good information for us to have. I'm not sure what more Josh would feel comfortable providing.
I feel like we do need to take some action because we, the board. suggested that we might want some of these expenditures to be not made at all or delayed. And so by taking no action, I feel like that doesn't answer that question at all.
I agree. I, what I meant was, I don't think, it's not necessary that we, um, take action particularly tonight. If there's more information that, that anybody would feel comfortable with, unless Josh can tell us that some of these projects are going to start in the next couple of weeks, it would probably be okay to, to revisit this topic at a later date with, if we have more information that we want to request of him.
What, what would be the more information that we're looking for?
I'm not a hundred percent sure about that.
Yeah.
I think a bigger picture, I think what Ann was asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, certainly don't want to speak for you, but what other projects are, are on the docket, maybe the CIP plan or something like that and how spending, uh, the, between Hill and PA, about $60,000 from the trust fund, um, how that might affect any other projects that are projected over the next few years.
Would, in lieu of action, would guidance suffice at this point? Uh, Josh has, prioritized what he has here. And I, I think we can safely say that if we're looking at items on here, what, whether they're level one, two, or three, if they were coming out of the trust, I think we can safely say that we can move forward with those. That money is there and, you know, allocated, may, if not encumbered, but allocated to do those, those jobs. But then again, look at the items he's listed as urgent and that are project not coming out of the trust, you know? Um, so stick to those urgent projects and projects coming out of the trust. And then later on, looking down the road at them, seeing where we are, and then possibly moving forward or not moving forward on those. Is that the guidance? Would that kind of guidance suffice, Amy?
Well, I just don't understand why we wouldn't make a motion. I mean, I was sort of taking notes there and your thinking is almost in line with what I was thinking. So I would make a motion to, um, approve all projects, level, priority levels one, two, three funded by trust fund. And to approve all, um, projects coming from the operating budget of a priority level one and two. So if I, if I was making a motion, that's the motion I would make and I don't.
My question is, are you making a motion?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I'm happy to make that motion. Um, I feel like the sense of the crowd is that maybe those level two, projects coming out of the operating funds, that we may not have a majority of board members that agree to that. So if I needed to amend my motion accordingly, I would, but yeah, I'll make that motion. All trust projects, level one, two, three, yes. Um, all operating fund projects, level one and two, yes. My motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, anybody want to jump in with discussion before we move the question?
Andy, this is April. I would like to jump to a discussion as far as instead of just talking about projects, doing some quick math. I don't have a calculator right here handy on how much money we're talking about. Total also project timelines are, you know, what's the timeline of these projects? When are they, are some of these already scheduled? Because if we take no action, does that mean by default, some of these projects may be starting over summer? So my concern is we've already made a commitment to the taxpayers, at least verbally, that we're going to try to save every cent that we can. And yes, there are some things that need to be done, but if we can wait, we should do that until things are a little more certain.
And this is Ann. I have a question on the discussion, um, with approving everything priority one, two, and three coming out of the trust. Out of number three is the old main entrance redesign. Where exactly is that old main rent redesign? My computers keep skipping out on me tonight.
Yeah, that was a little choppy for me too. I believe he said it's the Walker House entrance.
On Academy Road.
So is that the entrance where the, um, SAU office is?
No, that's the end that broke off right now.
I just, I'm, in my mind, I just can't see where Walker House is. So is it the courtyard?
Ann, it's the horseshoe where you, where you used to pull in to drop off kids.
Okay.
Right on Academy Road, the little horseshoe right there.
Okay. So that's how we designed the pavement and all of that. I was just concerned, I thought it was the entrance to the SAU and that part of the building was built in 1818 and I was just really worried that was going to be disturbed. So thank you, Jean.
All right. Um, on a roll call vote, we are, there is a motion to approve the that are listed as one, two, and three that are scheduled or listed on this sheet to come out of the trust fund as well as approving the, um, the ones labeled project to come out of the operating budget that are listed at a level one on a roll call vote.
Before we take a vote, can we get some numbers? I've grabbed two calculators and neither of them are working, even though they're both solar calculators.
Andy, my motion was, um, priority level one and two for money coming from the operating fund.
Question is, can we wait on that second part of that motion to see if priority one and two can come out of the trust instead of the operating budget?
We have a.
That's not part of the motion.
Okay. I'm just not understanding why we're not using money out of the trust and it's coming out of our budget. I know the budget's approved, but there's no reason that if we can save the money out of the budget to save money, that we should be taking it out of the trust. That's just my.
Noted. Okay. I'm going to call the question again.
April's waiting for a number.
I, I don't, I'm not sure who she's, April, I don't know who you're asking for that number. I don't.
April, I just did quick, it looks like about eighty-eight thousand.
Eighty-eight thousand and trust?
Nope. Eighty-eight thousand. Uh, I'm, I'm not concerned about the trusts. Um, eighty-eight thousand for projects listed either as priority one or two.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. All right. On a roll call vote, Jean.
Uh, yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Ann?
I'm voting because right now our residents are having a hard time even buying a gallon of milk. And now I'm going to tell them, I just approved eighty-eight thousand dollars to be spent out of the budget. So I have to say.
No.
And I'm a yes. Could I just, um, make one comment quickly here? Ann, as to what you, you know, just stated your reasoning for no. We've now voted on something as a board and whether we voted to support or not to support, we have made a decision. You know, and, and obviously I respect your position on that, but, uh, it was told to me or, um, explained to me by long-serving board members that whether we disagree or agree, when we make a decision as a body, we own that decision as a body. So I just, you know, want, want to put that out there.
Yes. Residents know what we're voting on and residents know that they're having a hard time and residents do come and discuss, I'm pretty sure with every single one of you, that their issues they're having. And we're just saying, we froze the budget back on April fourth or sixth. I'm not sure of the exact date now. And here we just say, okay, here's eighty-eight thousand dollars. I'm not saying needs to be done or not need to be done, but we should have gone through and, and we should have gone through and just go through. I'm sorry.
Boardmates? Can I suggest that we get back on the agenda?
Yes, Amy. Um, that's the end of four G. So, um, there are still some people hanging out on the phone. God bless them. We are on to agenda item number five, our second public comment section. You will, if you've got something that you want to put in the chat, go ahead and do that. And if you're on the phone, just sit tight and when any discussion that might happen from the chat finishes, I'll have Patty unmute the folks that are on their telephones. So I'll give it a minute or two to see if anybody wants to drop anything in the chat to be recognized. I'm not seeing anything. If you want to unmute the folks on the phone, um, anybody else, if you, you still can drop something in the chat and when we're done with the phone people, I will circle back to that. Um, so if you're called in on your phone, your line should be unmuted now. If you've got something that you'd like to contribute, please state your name.
I hope I'm not interrupting anybody that was going to chime in. This is Kevin Foss, three, four, one, Buck Street.
Go ahead, Kevin. Thank you.
Um, I just want to speak to the topics that you guys were just discussing. Um, I am a member of the CIP committee. I am speaking for myself and not for the committee. One of the reasons you don't just take all of this stuff from trust, even though it wasn't part of the plan to take it from trust is because those trust funds are part of a much bigger plan that spanned a number of years. And if you start taking money from trust when it isn't intended to come from trust right now, you create a problem that mushrooms as we go through the next five or so years and what our plan was. And last year, the, the board asked Josh Coughlin to put a lot of effort into putting together a more comprehensive CIP plan. And he did. And it seems to be a slap in the face to the work he did that you would entertain throwing it out the window A, and that some of these board members don't seem to even know that the plan exists B. And the other thought I had was if you defer projects as you would be if you didn't spend the eighty-eight thousand, you are compounding the problems and we have buildings that are just like Village School was, very expensive and out of reach for us to catch up on. So while eighty-eight thousand is a lot of money, deferring some of these projects would be penny wise, but pound foolish. That is my thoughts for, for now. I have others, but I'll leave it at that, given that it's almost 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Anybody else on the phone would like to contribute to public comment tonight? Andy?
Yes, Jean. There is a question from Tammy Sanjan in chat as to the end date for teachers and staff.
Yep. Um, I'm gonna, let me close the phones first. If I'm not hearing anything else there, Patty, um, you can go ahead and mute those. And then Tammy, um, do you want to jump on with your microphone and, and explain that a little bit more?
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, I was just asking.
Sorry, one second. Um, Sandy, this is, it's Tammy Sanjan.
I'm good. Sanjan. Okay. Um, we have not heard a decision about when, uh, staff and teachers' last day of school would be students. We have heard the last day and, um, we were just wondering when the last day for, uh, teachers and staff.
Um, is it okay with my fellow board members? It looks like Patty's got something to say. Is it okay with you if we allow her to respond? Notting head from Amy.
Yes. Yes.
Absolutely. Thanks. Go ahead, Patty.
That decision has not yet been made. Um, we need to take a look at contract days and then that also needs to be something that is discussed with, um, NEA New Hampshire and the local representatives. So that has not been completed yet. So no, the decision has not yet been made.
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
Is it possible to project an anticipated date that that would be made or an anticipated week?
So I just want to caution, and actually I apologize because I really meant to say at the be, the beginning of public comment tonight, that we, as, as a general rule, we don't respond to public comments. So I want to be careful about having too much of a conversation right now. I think it's safe to ask Patty to please relay any information to the staff as soon as it is reasonably available.
Hi, this is, this is April, April Valani, and I would like to reference policy number BEDH, public participation in citizens' comments at board meetings. Number six does state the opinions expressed by citizen during public comment are the opinions of the individual speaker and that brief factual questions may be answered by the board and or its staff. So we can act.
It does not require that we have to and.
Exactly.
Our general procedure has not to engage.
Our general procedure. Our general procedure should be our policy and not something that we make up on a whim.
So we should, oh, I don't think it was made up on a whim. It's at least tradition if nothing else. And if that needs to be formalized into policy, we can certainly tackle that.
Fair enough. Thank.
I'm sorry, Andy. One more thing. I just wanted to, um, put out to the board, uh, that April vacation, there were three days that we did work. So I'm not sure if you can comment on that. I'm just wondering if that's being taken into consideration as well.
Again, um, without going into too much, I, Patty said that she was working with the union. I'm, I'm guessing that the union will take care of that. Anybody else in the chat? I'm not seeing any, so we're going to move on. We, once again, have need to go into non-public session. Just to clarify for the public, the reason that we split up non-public session, tonight, there was some time sensitive stuff that we wanted to get done, um, at the beginning of the meeting to be, to be conscientious of some people's time. This is, it's not typical, um, but it was, we felt it necessary tonight. Um, so we currently have need to go into non-public session. In accordance with the New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, small letter A, which has to do with the dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected has a right to a meeting and request that meeting to be open, in which case their request shall be granted. B, hiring of any person as a public employee. And C, matters which if discussed in public would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself, unless such person requesting an open meeting. There's more to that, but basically it has to do with reputation. On a roll call vote, uh, April.
Yes.
Ann. Sorry, Ann, I didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andy. My computer keeps pausing. So I didn't hear you. Sorry. Uh, I, yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. It's nine fifty-four.
Okay. So again, I will lock the meeting and move folks individually to the lobby. And once non-public is over, everyone will be admitted back in if they stick around.
Don't forget to turn off the recording.
Thank you.
Recording has started, and the meeting has been unlocked.
Make a motion to seal the minutes from non-public.
This is Amy. I'll second.
We want to specify.
Can we specify a time period, Jean?
For two weeks or until such a time process has been completed.
Thank you.
And Amy seconded, is that right? All right, um, on a roll call vote, seal the minutes for two weeks or until such time that the hiring process is completed. Jean?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Um, agenda item seven, um, appointments and resignations. Patty?
I would like to nominate, um, the teachers as presented.
Motion to approve.
This is Amy. I'll second.
Thank you. Um, on a roll call vote, Anne? Amy?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I think we have resignation.
Yep.
We have one staff resignation that needs to be approved.
This is April. I'm making a, a motion that we accept the resignation presented.
Second.
Thank you. On a roll call vote, April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yep.
Anne?
I have to abstain because I did not read that recognition, resignation, sorry.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think that concludes the business of the meeting. I'll make, I'll accept the motion.
No, we added review minutes to the end of the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Can we vote, put them on as a draft, because I've got quite a few, um, corrections to the minutes? It's fair to Sandy to corrections at this point.
So post them as draft, is that what you said, Anne?
Yeah, I'm making a motion that we post them as draft because I have, I know I have quite a few, um, corrections on, on two of the minutes, and it's not fair to Sandy to try to do that this late.
Is there a second to post the draft minutes?
April was second.
On a roll call vote, April?
Wait, I have, I have discussion, I'm sorry, guys. I'm all for this, but even better than that, is there some reason why this board doesn't handle these revisions outside of the meetings? You know, like Anne, you would email your changes to Sandy, and then at the time of the meeting, you know, and April would email her changes and me, mine. And then at the time of the meeting, Sandy would say, you know, here, here are the changes that I received. Or she would put in the drive the minutes as amended by comments from board members. And that way, it's just like lickety-split at the meeting.
I was just gonna suggest the same thing. I think it's, it's possible that it wouldn't work out if two people ask Sandy to amend the same sentence in two different ways. I would hope that would be infrequent. Um, I think that's a wonderful idea. I think there is a motion to post the draft minutes, and I'm perfectly okay with that, at least so that some information gets out there. But I think it's a great idea, Amy, moving forward to, you know, instead of, the meetings are long anyway. It's, if people are confident in their revisions, um, hopefully it doesn't need to take up a half hour of meeting time if you have revisions, and you can send them, um, to Sandy, and she can compile those and make a, a revised set and have it go to Kathy, and Kathy pops it in the drive for us to, to review before the next meeting. Hopefully, we can, you know, look at it, make sure we've read it ahead of time, and approve with revisions. Is that, is everybody okay with that process?
Andy, I think for legalese, we need to have that verified. Only because of all the other boards I sit on, meeting discussion, minutes discussions have to be made in a public meeting. But it may be different for school, so.
I'm not talking about discussion over email, Anne. I'm talking about an email from only you to only Sandy that says, you know, Sandy, you know, I voted yes on that motion, you have me as no, or I, I had to leave the meeting early and the minutes, you know, whatever your correction is. So it's not a discussion at all.
It isn't, but it's, it's public information because it's a public meeting. I'm fine with, I'm fine with that idea, but I'm just saying legally, um, it's, we're not able to do that on any of the town boards that we currently sit on. Isn't it, it isn't a non-meeting, and it isn't an accidental meeting that the public has no access to, but anything that has to do with minutes. So I would just feel comfortable if we just ran it by.
Yeah, I can reach out to NHSBA, the, the lawyer there, Will. He's very responsive, very helpful. I can, I can ask him if that strategy is acceptable.
I just don't want to get in trouble right off the bat.
Hear that.
This is April. Also, if we're going to review our minutes policy, that sounds like, you know, if we're permitted to email, as Amy has suggested, a wonderful thing that we could include in that policy on how to address you know, requested corrections to minutes.
I agree. Um, so we still have a motion to post the draft minutes, though.
Yep, been seconded by April. I think, right?
Yep.
So.
I didn't get who seconded that.
April. Okay, um, so on a roll call vote, post the draft minutes of any outstanding meetings, uh, other than today. Um, those have a time period attached to them. So the, I guess I'll go right through them. The minutes of February ten, the draft minutes of February ten, March three, April twenty-one, May five, and May twelfth. On a roll call vote. Jean?
Yep.
April?
Yes.
Anne? Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, thank you. Uh, I think it was April that talked me down from, from adjournment. I had that written on one of my copies of the agenda, but I skipped it, but I think that concludes business. So I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Before we do that, are we going to wait if we have, um, corrections or amendments? Suggested amendments, um, how do we handle that between now and next meeting to move this along?
I think I, I will reach out to Will at NHSBA to see if the revision process that we discussed is appropriate. I will do that tomorrow, so hopefully I'll get a response tomorrow. And then if, assuming that he says that's okay, um, then we can, we can send those suggested revisions, again, one at a time, not copied emails, um, to Sandy.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
And our next meeting is June second?
Yes, did, did we finish that motion, though? Lose my mind.
You didn't. I'll, I'll second that, the motion to adjourn.
Okay, um, and on a roll call vote, then, Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
You, too. Thank you all.
Have a great night.
Good night, everyone.